We're actually running a little bit late today for a couple of minutes. I'll go ahead. I'll call today's meeting to order for May 9, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call will show that all commissioners are present today. The first item we have is the approval of the agenda. Board members, you have the agenda in front of you. Could I have a motion to approve that agenda?
So moved.
I got a motion to approve, second?
Second.
And a second?
I'll second it. I got a question on what some of these events are. I haven't kept up.
Okay, we'll go ahead. We'll, I got a motion and a second. And do you want us to approve it, or do you want to ask some questions?
Yeah, approve it.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we have an approved agenda. Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
Yeah, Jeff just informed me what Curd Fest is and knowing those people, do you have a date on that?
On Curd Fest?
Yeah.
I think that is on the consent agenda. What are we just doing the overall agenda first?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, it'll be a public hearing.
Right, it's a public hearing.
It'll be a public hearing.
Let's all talk. Okay, choose a spokesperson.
All right, that's later in the agenda and there's a public hearing on that.
Alrighty, great.
So we're good.
All right, well then I'll hold the rest of the questions. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So we do have an approved agenda. Let's move forward. We have a presentation today.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name is Melissa Huberty. I'm the Human Services Administrator, and I am presenting one item today, and it's the proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. It's item B1 on page five in your packet. And I'm just going to read it for your approval, and then make just a couple of comments after with your permission. So this is the proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental health is part of overall health, and one in five adults experiences a mental health problem in any given year, and whereas approximately one half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14 and three quarters by the age of 24, and whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause among young adults, and 90% of people who die by suicide had shown symptoms of a mental health condition according to interviews with family, friends, and medical professionals, and whereas long delays, sometimes decades often occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals first get help, whereas early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery, and whereas it is important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to get help when it is needed, and whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and the stigma that far too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help, and whereas public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness, now therefore be it resolved that the Stearns County Board hereby proclaims May 9, I believe it is, 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and in the county of Stearns to shine a light on mental illness and fight discrimination, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for equal care. So with your approval, I will ask that you support this proclamation.
Commissioner Clark?
Move adopting the proclamation.
I have a motion for that proclamation?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on that? Let me just comment, Melissa. Obviously, it's an important issue for this community, for all communities. You know, the violence that we see in this nation, the struggles that we see with our kids, drug addiction, dealing with our new jail that we're planning, and knowing that many of those people suffer mental illness, and then we could solve some of the issues by solving their health problems, mental health problems. It's very important that we are addressing these. I know we have a couple of people from NAMI here today as well, and we appreciate their effort locally, what they're doing. So very much appreciate the support of this proclamation, and obviously we could be doing more, maybe we should be doing more. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I don't think there's anybody. Thank you.
I'll just add a quick comment that for those who are suffering from mental health issues, that help is out there and that it actually does work, and also with a lot of gratitude for our Stearns County staff and those in the community that are in the helping professions, particularly Human Services Department, the County Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Office, Human Resources, and all the other departments that have staff working in the helping professions, a lot of gratitude for the work they do every day to help minimize the suffering that people are experiencing in the community with mental health issues. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue to move on now with the consent agenda. Board members, you have items one through 16 in front of you. If there are any of those items that would like to be pulled, you can pull them at this time. Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve all 16 of those items.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
A motion on all 16. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second. Any further discussion on those? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll continue to move on to public works.
Good morning, Commissioners. My item for you on the agenda today begins on packet page 127. I also handed out a bid summary to you. I apologize, but those bids were opened after submission of the agenda requests. So today I'm asking the board to approve awarding the bid for the 2023 epoxy striping contract. This is something that the department was given ARPA funding for, so three years' worth of funding was $120,000. We had also put some additional money aside in our professional contractual portion of our maintenance budget, and then a few other maintenance line items will help to pay for the low bid of Sir Lines Alot. The estimate was $301,871. The bid was $351,145. We did talk with the contractor, and we'll be removing about $20,000 worth of work out of that. County Road 134, Minnesota Street in St. Joseph, we would continue to stripe that with our own forces with latex paint. So this is ground-in wet reflective paint. It's epoxy, so it lasts a lot longer, especially being ground in, so the plows don't take those glass beads off. So I am asking the board to award the contract to the low bidder with the understanding that we are removing one road from this contract, and we have that money set aside in our budget. One other item, a bid was misplaced. These were paper bids publicly opened, and so the low bidder was not actually read at the bid opening because it was misplaced. It was delivered here overnight. Everything was marked appropriately. We documented that it came in on time, so I'm asking the board to also waive that formality.
Mr. Chairman, is that in one motion, or you want two separate motions?
It can be one. It doesn't matter.
And was the one that you received, the Sir Lines?
Correct. Sir Lines Alot was the low bid that we read at a later date and opened.
I think, Ms. Chairman, I think that's the most unique name of a company I've ever heard. How many miles, Mr. Chairman, Jody, how many miles is this gonna?
It, oh, I don't know the miles off the top of my head. We have a four-lane section of County Road 75 that I discussed yesterday during the road tour, so that's about three miles. Business 23 or County Road 85 in Painesville, I don't have the exact miles on, but this is comparable to what we're seeing in contract prices. Striping has gone up significantly. The materials cost more, and there are very few companies that actually do this striping anymore in Minnesota.
Ms. Chairman, I'm just curious what the miles would be when you find that out. I'd be curious what that is. I'll make a motion to waive the formality and also recommend approval of Sir Lines Alot, the lowest bid for $351,145.
Could I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Notch, all those, oh, any discussion, further discussion? I was, I will just ask, Jody, does it come a point where that we maybe take over our own striping in that, you know, the expenses there? I don't know if MINDOT does their own striping because of the amount that they do, but does it come a point where we decide that we can do it more effectively or efficiently? But of course, I mean, you're talking about equipment as well.
We do a significant amount of our own striping with latex paint. We do have a striping truck. However, with high traffic and snow plowing, that latex paint does come off quickly. So an example I give is County Road 75 between St. Joseph and Wade Park. We would have to do that road probably three times a year, and then we wouldn't be able to do it over the winter, whereas this epoxy striping that's ground in will show up over winter, and it lasts, I would guess, about three years, three to five years. And so while we do a significant amount of our own striping on some of these higher-traffic urban areas, we prefer to do this ground-in striping. We do this with a lot of our reconstructs so that that striping will be good until we do that first seal coat. So again, we do a lot of our own striping. We do the thermal pavement markings like arrows, left turn only, right turn only, those kind of things, the thicker crosswalks. This is just the lines that go down the road.
Okay, good. I'll call the question, then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Did you have anything else?
I have no miscellaneous unless anyone has something for me.
Yeah, I was just, maybe you want to comment. We had a road tour yesterday, and I think maybe the public should be aware of what that is and what happened. For the most part, I thought people were pleasant on the tour. And anyway, maybe just want to explain that because we were out and about actually looking at the county, you know, actually from one end to the other, from the river out to the Todd County line, so yeah.
So as part of our annual five-year road improvement program update, we do an annual road tour with the county board members to look at issues we've had complaints about, to look at some of the projects in process, some of the projects that have been recently completed, and we're able to go through that and discuss some of the issues that go into how we put together our road program. So we haven't done that in a few years because of COVID, so this is the first year since 2019 that we've been able to get back to doing that road tour, and it's a good opportunity to look at some of those issues, like I said, that commissioners hear a lot about, and as well as staff. So yesterday, we did look at some projects that are almost done, just need the final lift of pavement. We looked at some upcoming projects, and we looked at some of the issues, like I know right at the very end, and it was at the end of, you know, seven hours of being in a bus, but we looked at that striping on County Road 75 as an example, and how that is basically non-existent after the winter. We try to work out or work in highlighting one of Stearns County's businesses, and yesterday I wanted to give a shout out to Roto Chopper, who welcomed us and gave us a tour of their facility so we could see what they bring to Stearns County and their interesting business. So as part of all of that, if people have issues they want us to look at, they should certainly contact us. While we did not have a large attendance at our public input meeting last Tuesday night, so we didn't get a whole list of issues to look at from that, we did have some comments that we could look at from commissioners, so.
And I think we did see our share of potholes on the trip as well. So we're not void of potholes, and we are gonna attack those.
Our crews are working on, they're doing patching, they're trying to get caught up on crack sealing before those cracks seal up so we can hopefully prevent some potholes next spring as well. The worst, I want to point out, was not on a county road, but we did take a look at that. For those who have contacted us about 322nd, the county board certainly saw what 322nd Street in St. Cloud looks like, and we'll continue those discussions with the city of St. Cloud.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Jody?
Thank you.
We're moving the agenda rather rapidly here. We're moving on to environmental services.
Good morning. Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. Well, that'll come to a halt because that's usually what we do with public hearings. So we do have four public hearings for you, three large gathering and an ordinance, and then we can talk about some additional things at the end of my agenda. So I have Mark Lateral here and Jane Cannot, so I'm gonna pass it over to Mark.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners.
Good morning.
We'll begin on packet page 129. As Shelley stated, we're here this morning for three large gathering, public hearings. The first...
Okay, Mark, let me just say, so we're gonna do all three separately, is that correct?
Individually.
Okay, so then if there's people that want to testify, we'll call you at that time, and we'll do each of the public hearings separately.
Correct, individually, yep. So with me, as Shelley stated, is with us this morning is Jane Canon, our Senior Environmental Health Specialist. Jane is the staff member that works through the large gathering applications for our office. So the first, the first item is in regards to Curd Fest, and I will turn it over to Jane. She can explain Curd Fest and the process that's been gone through to this point.
Good morning, Commissioners. Commissioner Persky and the rest of the board, Jane Cannot, Senior Environmental Specialist with Stearns County Environmental Services. As Mark stated, the first large gathering we're going to discuss today is Curd Fest. This is a new event that we worked through the large gathering process on. It is out in North Fork Township, out at Redhead Creamery. Some of you may be familiar with that facility, Active Dairy Farm and an on-farm cheese plant. So Curd Fest, I believe this is their fifth year that they're going to be hosting this event. They have a website if you want more information as well, but they've approached the, it's growing every year basically, so they're now over that thousand or more people over the duration of events, so that's why we're here today to discuss this application. If you're not familiar with our large gathering panel, it consists of, we've got a member from the county sheriff's office, we've got someone from Auditor Treasure, we have emergency management, public works, Jody, that was just up here, public health, and then us in environmental services. So basically, as a panel, we review these applications and look at health and safety, make sure that the waste is going to be cleaned up, that they have sufficient bathrooms, porta-potties, that they have onsite medical services in the event of a medical emergency, that they have a severe weather plan in place, and an emergency radio so that they can monitor weather, that type of thing. And then more importantly, if there's going to be severe weather, what is their plan to be able to notify people to make sure that they can get them to safety? So, and then we look at everything from an environmental standpoint. So that's kind of in a nutshell what we do. Curd Fest, just a very brief description. It's gonna be on June 17, so it's a one-day event out at 31535 463rd Avenue in Bruton. Again, it's been going on a few years, but basically they have music, they have different vendors out there. They serve some food. They have their cheese curds that they're showcasing. I believe they, you can even walk around. They have farm tours. I've been out there myself. Very interesting. So it's also an educational event from a farm standpoint. I think they're gonna have a milking contest. You can actually view in their creamery cheese being made. So kind of a fun event as well as education to boot. So that's what we're here to discuss today. I don't believe the applicants are here, but we'll answer any questions that we can, if you have any. So, thank you.
Quick question. Around what time of day is it?
We have 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
I figured it was a day-long one, but it's just helpful, as the public's gonna give input.
Mark, do you?
Thank you, Jane. Mr. Chair Commissioners, I just wanted to add in that I have not received any correspondence for public comment on this, so I just wanted to make the board aware of that, so.
Okay. Any other questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody wanting to testify on the Curd Fest? Anyone wanting to testify on the Curd Fest? Last call for curds. Anybody?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay. Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing is closed. Did we have any written testimony come in at all? You said no, Steve, to your knowledge. And then I'm gonna ask this question. Sheriff, I'm gonna ask you on all of the public hearings here we have today. Have we had any complaints that the board should be aware of from that Curd Fest? Okay, thank you.
That's the one positive about being out in the country.
True enough, yeah. Mark, anything else?
Nothing further from me. Hearing no testimony, I just asked the board to consider approving the license for the Curd Fest large gathering. Mr. Chair, I'll move that for approval.
Okay. Commissioner Notch on the motion?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Bertram on the second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, move to the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members, the second item today is just, again, hold a public hearing for the Bluegrass June kickoff. I'll turn it over to Jane, and she can give you the background on this event.
So again, this is the Bluegrass June kickoff held at El Rancho Manana. This event will be June 2 through the 4. Operating hours listed on the application are 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Music, music-related activities. Again, I can explain what we looked at for large gathering, and just to also note, the large gathering panel for all of these did recommend approval. We looked at all the criteria required in the large gathering ordinance and what they submitted on an application, and all of the requirements have been met. So we do have representatives here today as well from the Bluegrass Association as well as Wild West. So if there's any specific questions on what goes on or that type of thing out there, they're in the audience if there's any questions on that.
All right. Do you have anything else to add, Mark?
Mr. Chair, board members, I just want to state that we did receive one written statement of support. It was included in the packet, so you all should have seen that. It came in via email to me, so that is the only piece of correspondence I did receive, so.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing?
Just, does this have a website? You know, it's not critical. I'm just curious.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, yes, it does. Yep. Yes, yes.
Okay. Then I'll open the public hearing on the Bluegrass kickoff, Bluegrass June kickoff. Anybody wanting to testify, please come forward, state your name, and we'll hear from you.
Good morning. I'm Dale Gruber from the Minnesota Bluegrass and Old Time Music Association, and just here to answer any questions or anything that you'd have for me to answer for you. to answer any questions or anything that you'd have for me to answer for you.
Questions for Mr. Gruber?
I get complaints about the Bluegrass Festival, but none that make sense, so I have not, I have not taken them seriously.
Go ahead.
So you have different, like, bands playing throughout the day then?
Yeah, well, what we do is, we've been doing it, I think, since 2000. We moved from Zimmerman to El Rancho. I think it was 2000 or 2001, I can't remember which year it was. But it's more of a family event. A lot of, you know, people come out there, they camp, they take and, we have at the ranch house, we have bands that sign up, you know, put a band together and that. And it's kind of our annual kickoff for our local musicians that all come out and bring their families. And it's really a family event. And then our, it's not, but in our August is really our biggest one, and that's really focused on families too. So, but yeah, it's just music, people sitting around campfires and then going up to the ranch house, signing up and playing music.
Sounds good. Yeah, cool.
Mr. Chair, thank you, thank you for being here. And just kind of given that it's the public hearing part of it, do you have anything you want us to know about either crowd control, roads, noise, that kind of thing?
Yeah, and the June festival is what I'm here for. You know, we've never had any complaints that I am aware of, of any problem. El Rancho works real well with us with controlling. We have a volunteer staff that helps with our June festival and as far as getting everybody where they need to go and the programming and stuff that we do. So we've never had any issues.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you're looking for any hell raising, you got to get there before 9:30 in the evening because it's an older crowd.
It's an older crowd, and yeah, we're really trying to focus too on bringing our June more family-oriented to and-
Part of the heritage.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello and thank you. My name is Charles Ward. I live directly across the lake at 27635 Schultz Road. There's just a couple of things. Yep, Bluegrass has been a good thing and a fairly family-oriented event. My concerns are more the underlying issues with notice. I don't think there's been good notice around the people that live around the area in order to even know that this event is going for a large gathering. I live directly across the lake, I got no notice, even though I've requested one on multiple occasions. I did bring today an addendum to compliance agreement with El Rancho Manana and Stearns County Environmental Services Department dated April 14, 2023. I'm sure you guys are probably aware of that. I don't think the public's aware of it. It is regarding campground's licensing, zoning, septic non-compliance located at 27302 Ranch Road, Richmond, Minnesota. This is an amendment to an agreement, an agreement that was several years ago. This document has been extremely difficult to kind of attain because it's not out there to just be requested easily. So I'm going to leave five copies of that for your review. My concern here is that there's non-compliance, has been non-compliance for many years. The septic system, my understanding is, is being upgraded presently, which is a good thing. Some of my concern is, living on the lake, when I asked, what's the damage being done with the septic as it was, I couldn't even get answers as to what the damage being done is. You know, how degraded were the septic systems, so on and so forth. So that's all I'm here to do today is leave you five copies of that and the underlying violations that have been there. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Benson, can we address that issue?
Mr. Chair, yes, we can. Jane has all the information in the large gathering ordinance, and she'll speak to how notice is provided.
Okay.
Yeah, so do you want me to do that now or wait?
Well, let's get, we'll get, let's see if there's any more testimony first of all. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone else wishing to testify? Last call on the Bluegrass Festival.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay. We'll close, oh, motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I'm going to have actually Jane go through the noticing and then Mark will talk about the stipulation agreement that was brought forward.
Okay, go ahead, Jane.
Okay, Commissioner Persky, members of the board, the large gathering ordinance requires the following for public hearing and for noticing, I should say. So it needs to go in the official newspaper of the county at least 10 days prior to the hearing, which in this case is the Cold Spring Record. And that did happen. As far as property notice, since this is in an unincorporated area, all property owners within one quarter of a mile of this property would have received a notice in the mail. And then it also goes to the town board, which in this case is Collegeville Township, and they did recommend support or approval of the application. That's part of the large gathering process.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, in regards to the addendum that Mr. Ward spoke of, we have been working with El Rancho Campground over the last few years to address non-compliance issues. We did have a compliance agreement that was signed originally and has led to this most recent addendum being put forward. The specifics of the addendum, I guess I could hand this out if you'd like to read it, but I'm not sure I'm at liberty to divulge in a public hearing or a public setting. We've deferred all these types of questions to Chad May and the county attorney's office since it is an act of enforcement and compliance situation. So I'm hesitant to speak to what the specifics are. I can say the overall situation is going in a very positive direction. We've made good steps forward to resolve the non-compliance, and hopefully soon we will have all the non-compliance resolved.
Mr. Chair, and just for your information, we did issue the license for El Rancho as the campground, but this specific item in front of you today is the large gathering ordinance, so those are two separate issues. And Mr. Ward was bringing up the issues that are related to campground compliance, of which they're represented by an attorney, and so we're represented by an attorney, and we try to make sure we have all those conversations through them. So we're in a very good shape in comparison to kind of our history, and we will continue to work to gain full compliance on El Rancho, but this is the large gathering. So we want to make sure we stay focused on that part.
Then my question to the both of you would be, is there any concerns that you would help as far as health and safety, as far as operating this event concerning the septic?
Mr. Chair, Board members, I don't. I think we have a good plan in place. We've already, the situation with the septic's in the campground, we've already stopped any potential pollution issues. The first, the solution has been broken into two steps. The first step has been taken, put in place, which then has stopped any kind of potential pollution. The second step is to finalize it and get it resolved. So I don't have any concerns personally.
And Commissioner Persky, if I may add as well, part of our large gathering process is making sure there's adequate porta-potties on site. So there are lots of porta-potties out at these events. We actually also go out and do an inspection before the event and walk through to make sure the requirements of the ordinance and the application have been met. And there's always lots of porta-potties, and they come out and pump them as needed throughout an event.
Good.
When it's more than one day too, so.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Other questions? Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Can we get, regarding the seriousness of this matter, can we get an odorized statement that the number of porta-potties is adequate?
Well, that's part of what we review, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, in the application, and we will go onsite and do an inspection to make sure everything's in place prior to the event.
So there will be verification to the number when that event occurs, and I think that's the most important thing.
Thank you. Are you good with that?
Yes, I am.
I was going to say, so to that end, there has to be the numbers that you're anticipating for the event to go forward.
Correct.
Other questions? If not, I'll ask the sheriff the same question I asked previously. Got any issues I should know about or we should know about prior to accepting the proposal? Okay, thank you. Okay? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Bluegrass license.
One second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Bluegrass Festival. Any other discussion?
As long as there are enough porta-potty.
Enough porta-potties. All right, highlight the porta-potty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, Mark, we'll go to the third one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board members. The third item this morning is in another large gathering, public hearing. This event is for the Wild Wild West show. Again, I will let Jane explain this event.
Commissioner Persky, members of the board, just a brief summary on this one, because again, we do have representatives from Wild West here. This event again is also at El Rancho Manana, and it is June 16 through the 18. They've got hours listed 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM. They listed on the application Wild West events, skits, music, shootouts, vendors, food. Again, our large gathering panel did move to approve this application because all information was provided. And I would defer to the Wild West representatives if you have any specific questions on what this event entails.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chair Commissioners, again, I did not receive any written testimony regarding this event, so I just wanted to make that clear to you.
Okay, any questions before I open the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, just a question, so like the food vendors, then do you have to go and inspect each one or they have?
Yeah, Commissioner Notch, so part of the process is, on our application, we ask for who the food vendors are going to be, and then we require typically what's called a special event food license for these folks if they're only going to be here in our county, like for one event. That gives them up to 10 days in an operating year. So yeah, that's part of what we do is we issue the food licenses and then we go out and, we don't always get out to every event, but we try to get out there, and we'll probably take a look when we do the walkthrough for this one as well. Like we do the Bluegrass Festival every year and we go out and inspect the food stands.
But you get the permit, they come and get, request the permit in advance? And the permit can actually be for the whole year then?
So with a special event, they can have up to 10, 10 days per calendar year. If it's a true mobile food unit and they're going to operate throughout the county, we'll often issue them a mobile food unit license.
Okay.
So it kind of depends on how many days per year they want to operate in Stearns County.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a multi-day or just one day?
This is June 16 through the 18, Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
Ah, okay. Well, it's the same weekend as Curd Fest. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important to note that these events, as Mr. Gruber said, Bluegrass used to be in Zimmerman, now it's in Stearns County. It's a huge tourist attraction, which is a positive. Wild West started in Stearns County but moved sites. So again, both very popular tourist-type entertainment, which is, you know, very, very unique. And as Director Benson said, there's two different issues. The events are separate from the other issues. Let's just keep that in mind.
All right. All right, I'll go ahead and I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on the Wild West, Wild West show?
Again, Charles Ward, again, with this amendment that was signed, this was attained through the Freedom of Information Act, okay, which took an attorney to get, so you're more than welcome to read it, it is public information. I don't understand why the county and the Collegeville Township Board has not been given this information before making decisions about moving forward. The events do affect the campgrounds, they do affect the lake, they do affect the septic system that was there over the last few years because the event is happening in the campgrounds, around the campgrounds, and puts added stress on all of that. So I do encourage you to at least get informed before you make your decisions. Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to testify? And Mr. Hammons, you don't know if we have received any written information on that?
Administration hasn't received anything else, no.
Did the department receive this?
We had no additional, yeah, we have all that information.
Okay, thank you.
It came from our attorney's office in conjunction with the other attorney.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to testify this morning? Anyone else wishing to testify? Last call on the Wild West show to testify. Now I'll go ahead and I'll close the public hearing. And I will go back to staff. I think you covered the issues about the facility as far as health and safety and the septic system.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, yes.
Information would be the same?
It would be the same.
Okay. Sheriff, and on this one, have we had any issues? No people acting crazy like it's the Wild Wild West? No? No gunfights? Let's hope not. Let's hope not.
There are.
Yeah.
Well, there are gunfights, Mr. Chairman, but they're fake bullets.
Okay, right. That's good to know.
So Mr. Chair, just out of curiosity, are there full hookups at the campground?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Does campground have full hookups?
Full hookups. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Notch, yes, there are full hookups throughout the campground. Not all the sites have them, but the vast majority. The El Rancho campground is licensed for 120 sites, and I do believe all of those have full amenities to them. I know Kevin Ward is in the audience, he could speak and confirm that if so desired.
Any other questions before we move forward on the approval? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bertram with the motion? Commissioner Clark with a second discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Board members, before we move on to the next item, I've had a concern at being on the board for a number of years and also on the planning commission. When we do make these events and we have the public hearings and giving them notice, we have the distance of a quarter mile and think that is by statute? I'm just wondering if it would be better in the public interest. And so, for example, like with these festivals that exceed 1,000 people, also perhaps like with gravel and mining, and also let's say, for example, a shooting range, if we may want to extend that when we see excess number of numbers or actually noise that would go beyond the quarter mile, I'm just wondering if it would be appropriate to include notice to a larger area, if that's something we would like to do. Or what? Giving notice about the public hearing, because when we do the public hearing by statute, we have to notify people within a quarter mile. But some of these events, like for example gravel mining or a shooting range or a large gathering, if we might want to just increase it to a half mile so that, I mean, the impact is greater, I feel, on some of these. Is that something we would want to consider as far as?
I'd be interested in what Director Benson has to say.
Okay. We don't have to address it now, but it's maybe something the planning commission can talk about as well.
All right.
Mr. Chair, just for your information, this would be an ordinance amendment to the large gathering ordinance. That specifies the quarter mile. We don't differentiate based on the type of event.
Yeah.
So again, breakfast on the farm is going to fall into the same category as whether it's El Rancho or any other large gathering, Curd Fest, and as Commissioner Notch said, sometimes having them out in a country area for several of them that we've had, it is, it limits the issue. But adding that distance, you certainly could do that, but it does take an ordinance amendment if you want to proceed that way.
And I totally agree that having them out in rural areas is, has less impact, there's no question about that. But when we do have public hearings at the planning commission, we often- But when we do have public hearings at the Planning Commission, oftentimes we hear people say, "Well, I didn't know, I never got notice." And, you know, they're right down the road from where the gravel pit's going to be, and they feel that they should have maybe been, because it's gonna affect them, because it's the only road to get to the gravel pit, and...
Mr. Chair, we are very appreciative of the fact that the neighbors are talking to each other when that occurs, because they end up at the meeting, which...
Right.
When they're at the meeting, that's notice, so we're appreciative of however they get notice. Again, if you as a board would like to change that for large gathering, that's one thing. For some of the other items like gravel, that's the other ordinance, so there are changes that would need to be made if you want to be, have a greater distance.
Great, okay.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Benson, the townships are also noticed. Are there some that do more communication with residents and other, I mean, lake associations? I'm just, I think that's part of your question, and perhaps there could be some recommendations back with regard to what are the situations that maybe we should look at that? The gravel is clearly something different than a one-time event, and it's something we've heard from numbers of people. Appreciate certainly what you're thinking about. So I don't know if it's the Planning Commission or if it's something that comes back here, but, you know, I don't, I know you're just trying to get a little discussion right now, that, you know, do we have some uniformity about how else people might get notice or not? And we don't know if anybody looks at it. I don't know about the rest of you, mostly what we get in our mailbox is junk mail, and I could miss something important, so sometimes I like emails better, because I see them.
And typically, it would be, you know, you're looking at four people, maybe it'll be eight people instead of that. However, it could be, there's a, like, there could be a lake development there that's relatively close, or even a small development that's just outside the quarter mile range.
Mr. Chair, we certainly, and Commissioner Clark, we certainly try to provide many opportunities for notice when there is a larger activity occurring. We go that extra mile. Typically, we have newsletters and various things, various activities. We're trying to make sure the public is brought in as well as the township. Some townships are better at communicating and come and ask us questions, and, you know, they put their information. In some cases, townships have secondary pieces that they have to participate in, so then the word spreads faster in certain areas. But we will, we certainly can look at this and bring back some ideas and talk about when do we notice which things in lake associations, et cetera, so that you have a full picture of notice.
Mr. Chair, I know I'm just coming up here not for this item, but I just wanna add two things. One, if we end up changing it, be aware that we might have a budgetary impact to those permits, because it's gonna be increased mailing, increased staff time. And then, secondly, the county has done great efforts in getting information out online through meetings on demand. I don't have the statistics, but there's hundreds of people every single week that get your agendas, your, you know, minutes, hours. So, and we get that word out all the time with the newsletters and such. So I think we wanna try to keep going that direction, maybe supplement it with further notice. But again, there would be some budgetary impact, because we already lose money on those permits. So that would be part of the package we'd bring back.
Yeah. And I know too, Angie, it doesn't affect a lot of people until it's in their neighborhood. And once it's in their neighborhood, then they become active, and so... And oftentimes, we're at the meeting, and we have the public hearing, and no one speaks. But then I've been to meetings past midnight where people are still speaking, and we've had testimony of over 40 people, so, yeah. So, Angie, just something we should maybe consider, all right? We can move on with the next agenda item.
Mr. Chair, this is another public hearing, and it is in the land use area related to a zoning amendment, and I will have Angie go through that with you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Angie Berg, Environmental Services. April 18th, the board set a public hearing for today. The consideration is to amend Stearns County Subdivision Ordinance Number 230. And this was basically to put a little box around minor subdivisions. In the county, you can split property in two different ways, one through administrative subdivision, where it's a meets and bounds tract, not platted, or a plat. Under the plating option, you can do either a major plat or a minor plat. If you do a minor plat, you don't have to go through the same requirements, such as there's no public hearing, you don't have to do wetland delineations. You don't see them here, those are approved by Shelley. And so what we're proposing in front of you today is to basically allow one lot of record that exists today to have one minor subdivision per year. So, again, not to skirt around the requirement of having to go through a public hearing, needing to go to Planning Commission and County Board. So one per year is what we're looking at. I did send notice as required to township cities, all the surveyors that we have in the area. I received no public comment, other than I did receive an email from the Stearns, I'm sorry, the former Stearns County Surveyor Scott Marlin, who is now acting as the Morrison County Surveyor on a contractual basis. And he indicated that Morrison County's ordinance is the same as what we're proposing, that they've kinda closed that loophole, if you will, already. So with that, I have no testimony to share with you, this would be effective upon publication.
Questions for Angie about this ordinance change?
Mr. Chairman, we did review it as your alternate. You couldn't be at the Planning Commission, so I was at the Planning Commission. We did review it with the Planning Commission, and obviously, people were there, and nobody said nothing. For the Planning Commission members, there was discussion about it, but obviously, they recommended approval, so... And if it's good enough for Morrison County, then by God.
We'll have to come out on the lake where our cabin's on, Commissioner Bertram, sometime you might disagree. Nothing against our wonderful neighbors.
Angie, I just have a question, so, and you're saying that then this would pertain to existing lots, correct?
So the way it would work, Mr. Persky, would be that if we have a lot of record existing today, so as of the date of publication, so let's say that's probably gonna be May 23rd, that's when your minutes will be published. As of that day, if you have a 40-acre parcel, and you wanna subdivide it into four 10-acre lots, because let's say it's zoned residential 10, and you can do that, you can only come in with, so in year one, you could do one lot, year two, you could do second lot, year three, you could do third lot, year four, you do fourth lot. That's what we're saying, and we're also saying that if you have an 80, and you split it into two 20s, you don't get eight 10-acre lots. So it's the lot of record on the day of the effective date of the ordinance. So, lot of record is a defined term in the ordinance, it's very common for zoning and subdivision, so... Okay?
And, Mr. Chairman, this excludes within the shoreline, right, Angie?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, it would include anything, any plat in the county.
Including the shoreline?
Yes.
Any more discussion or questions on that? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
We have to do the hearing, don't we?
Oh, do we, is this a hearing?
It is, Mr. Chair.
Sorry. I'll open the public hearing.
There may be something somebody says.
Yeah, that's true. Anyone wishing to testify on the ordinance change? Anyone wishing to testify on the ordinance change? I don't believe so, anyone? I'll close the public hearing.
So, in summary, the change allows what?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, it would allow a one-lot plat once a year.
Big demand for that?
There's been, over the, I don't know, Shelley and I were discussing this a little bit yesterday. We've had this option for maybe 15 years or so, this minor plat. We've maybe had three to five, I would say, skirt the requirement of a major plat. It hasn't been a big issue until obviously recently, we had one that came to light, and I think it was time to close the hole.
Thank you. Now I'll look for that motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Notch with the motion.
I can second that.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer with a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, we have a request to set a public hearing, and I'm gonna have Angie go through that with you.
Okay, so next is to discuss some, I would just say, a lot of cleanup changes to the land use and zoning ordinance number 439. As a department, we jot things down throughout the years, as we see maybe a pattern in requests, things that need to be tweaked, et cetera. So our department's been kinda working on this laundry list. Part of the laundry list had included, but will not include, changes to accessory buildings in Shoreland. And I think we decided at the Planning Commission, we, meaning the Planning Commission, to pull those back and set those aside. Maybe we'll talk about what to do with that next. But what's in front of you today in unpack it page, let me get to that here, 299, is a spreadsheet version of, the second column is proposed provision, and then the third column is rationale for change. So again, nothing, I would say, really major here. If you want, Mr. Chair, I can go through each one of those, or I can wait until the public hearing. Today is, as Shelley indicated, to set the public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move setting the public hearing.
A motion to set that public hearing? Commissioner Lenzmeyer with a second?
Okay.
And I'll just have a question, and Angie, is this gonna come before the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chair, it already did.
Oh, I missed that.
You missed that one, Commissioner Bertram was in your place.
How did you like it, Mr. Bertram?
I ask as many questions as you would have, Mr. Chairman.
Did they scowl at you as well?
No, we're used to it.
The meeting was a lot shorter.
Ouch.
Mr. Chair, the proposed public hearing date is June 6th.
Then I will peruse it and ask my questions at the public hearing.
Just a quick question, so like, I'm, I can page, it's 289 or which one it is here? Yeah, 299. Is there a reason, instead of you asking in the public hearing, maybe ask beforehand, why some are, they expire after one year, and why you're proposing some of those six months?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Notch, someone else had asked that too, maybe it was Commissioner Bertram.
I did.
Yeah, the reason is some of those variances in conditional use permits, they just take longer to get your goal, to meet all the conditions to start the project. Whereas construction sites, provisional use, Shoreland alterations, they're really shorter. And so we're trying to give people a little bit longer on the more complicated projects, but keep the other ones short. And right now, we don't have an expiration date on our applications, and it really causes a problem with our system and trying to track things, so...
Oh, so they don't automatically expire after a year?
Permits do, but not applications.
Oh, okay. Oh, they're sitting in the queue and not coming?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
With that, Angie, at the township meeting, we had the lawyer for the townships speaking, and they talked about extensions. Is it my understanding if we have a rational reason to extend on the county or township end, we can actually make the request for an extension on that? It doesn't have to be approved by the applicant?
Mr. Chair, are you referring to what we commonly call the 60-day rule?
Correct.
Right, so the statute allows, the statute gives the county 60 days to make a decision. The statute also gives the county an additional 60 days with notice to the applicant on why. And the why can be, you just need more time.
Yeah.
And we do that quite often.
Because, and I mean, just with staffing and the way our business too, getting things done in a timely fashion and getting it done appropriately does take time. So it's nice to have that additional 60 days. All right. So we're looking for that public hearing date?
Yes, please.
June 6th.
Okay.
You have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and a second?
And a second.
Okay, any other discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, as a follow-up to that, as I indicated, the Planning Commission recommended pulling out the accessory structure standards from the discussion due to the recent plat that we had some discussion on with accessory structures. The reason we have proposed some changes originally is that we're really seeing a lot of non-riparian parcels that are asking for bigger sheds, right? And so we've been seeing that pattern, and again, when we start seeing a pattern, we wanna bring it to the Planning Commission and the County Board. But given the bit of controversy we had, we decided to pull that out. I do believe, well, I know I've had Commissioner Bertram and Commissioner Persky, we've all talked about this, and thought that it would be best to get a small work group together to delve into this issue. It doesn't have to be, you know, it doesn't have to take six meetings, I'm thinking a couple meetings, let's just go through this. I've been framing it in my mind in terms of how to propose it, but obviously, we wanna seek to understand what the concerns are, and then we would come back at a later time, maybe in July, for a public hearing change. So Shelley and I were discussing yesterday, we would recommend, or ask the board, rather, today to give us authorization to reach out to the Planning Commission for two members, the Board of Adjustment for one or two members, because they see a lot of these requests. And then commissioners, up to two, otherwise you have a quorum, and then lastly, a township rep. So if you, if you're amenable to that, we would ask you to allow us to get a work group together, again, to focus in on that accessory structure change.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be willing to actually sit on there, too.
Yeah. Okay. And I have an interest as well, because it seems when it comes down to definition about what is a cabin, what is a house, what is a shed, what is a shouse, it's all in the eye of the beholder, and I think we need a little bit of clarification on what we're actually putting on for structures, and what they actually are, and how they're being used, yeah.
Mr. Chair, you don't need a motion on that, do you?
Head nod is good, otherwise, if I could take a couple...
I'm guessing all of us would be interested, but it sounds like we've got two commissioners that have spoken. So we would go with Commissioner Wise, Commissioner Persky, and Commissioner Notch, since those are the first I heard. Not that everybody isn't interested, and we can keep you guys, everyone in the loop. And then Angie would reach out to Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment members, and then look for, seek a township representative. And if you guys have ideas or suggestions related to that, as far as that township representative, certainly send it forward as well.
Mr. Chairman, obviously, like Commissioner Clark said, we all have an interest. Just keep us in the loop, as Director Benson said, as you're doing it, so the two of you can meet, but you can kinda share, we can have a, you know, decent input as it's moving forward. And the township, obviously, let's pick somebody that would be more effective than others. There'd be some townships that would have more minimum interaction with this, so let's think of somebody in those townships, I'm not sure.
And, Mr. Chair, I agree with you, Commissioner Bertram. I'm wondering if it doesn't, you might not have, but you might wanna consider adding somebody from one of the lake associations? Given, given some of the sensitivity around that, that maybe, so I don't wanna grow your committee too big, but yes, it'll be good if you keep updated, and obviously, if we all came and joined it, it would turn into a much bigger thing than what you're looking for, so...
Mr. Chair, as far as the township person, we were thinking about George Fiedler. He's on Brockway Township Board, and he's on our Board of Adjustment, so that he would kinda kill two birds with one stone. He was on our Comprehensive Plan Committee as well.
I think we've got some additional ideas, too, so maybe we could just give them.
Sure.
I, you know, I was just gonna suggest, Mr. Chair, I had mentioned Diane Knoll from Albany Township, I know she's very active. Besides, you know...
I think we can check in with them, it's gonna be availability as well, so we will check in and see how that, if there's someone that'll be able to commit to doing a couple of meetings.
If you just wanna give your ideas to Shelley or myself, then we'll make a decision on that.
Mr. Chairman, Angie, I think George would be great from the Board of Adjustment. I don't know that we wanna, or it's important to piggyback that. I think it would be important to have someone like Supervisor or Kirk Knoll, and, you know, a couple of different... And the Lake Association, obviously, the biggest lake association is the Sauk River, and that's Brad Matuska's president, so that might be an idea, but...
Well, and, Mr. Chair, we've got some associations that are heavily active with us on a number of issues, so whether it's that one or others, I mean, there's a number who have made a real difference in the work that we do. So maybe I could just give them to you, and you can figure out availability, instead of us trying to figure out your committee.
That'd be fine, just send me an email, that's perfect.
You know, and as we're sitting here talking, this isn't just going to be riparian, this is also outside, so then I start thinking about, do we have an egg representative? Because, not to get too far in the weeds, but part of the issue or the concern is that structures on restricted land is a concern, right? is that structures on, except, structures on restricted land is a concern, right? So a lot of the restricted land is in our ag areas outside of Shoreland, so-
Right.
We'll, we'll do some brainstorming and come up with a good list.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll talk to the representatives, Commissioner Persky and, and Commissioner Notch, just to let you know where we, where we land.
Good. Commissioner Clark, you have anything?
Yeah, it's just, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's, you brought up ag. I mean, clearly, when we redid our con plan, when we updated it, figuring out how workforce housing, some of those accessories, you've done, or we've done a lot of work on that, but to the extent there's something additional, as well as, I think Leah and I would hear from our friends at the council and agent if we didn't bring up accessories that help seniors be able to live in place. So having somebody else probably makes some good sense, and we could just get ideas to you, to you all. Thank you.
Okay, I do have just a miscellaneous item for you, if that's okay. I know in the past, we've had a conversation about the standpipe in, in an easement on the east side of Hidden Cove Road. It is in the jurisdiction of the county, since the permit was issued to us as Sterns County Environmental Services, so I am in contact with Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, DNR, and Board of Water and Soil Resources, and Jason Wienerman, who's did a report related to that and the standpipe, and is what a part of the, the fix in 2008. We're going to go out and do an assessment, and we're checking with the others if they want to participate. So once I have that back from, you know, MPCA and DNR, if they want to participate, then we will come up with a date for us to verify its level, the level of maintenance needed. So this is just going to be ongoing maintenance, it's just going to become part of what we do. We will let Collegeville Township know, and we will make sure everybody knows that that's part of our ongoing maintenance of, of the standpipe, because it is ours under the Army Corps of Engineer general permit that was issued. So that will happen in the near future. I don't have a date yet, but I can let you know when we have the date. And that's all I have, unless you have something for me.
Okay. Are there questions for Shelley? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us down to last item, issues by commissioners, but before that, Mr. Hammers, do we have anything from administration?
Not this time, no.
No, okay, all right. Then we'll go with issues by commissioner, Commissioner Notch.
I have nothing.
No?
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Did you have a good trip yesterday?
Oh, yes, it was-
Pleasant, fairly pleasant.
It was very good.
Yeah.
It was actually, I mean, I guess, being out in the western part, I travel a lot of roads anyway. But yeah, it's, it is truly amazing the amount of repairs, whether it's Mindat, Sterns County, cities, that needs to be done after this past winter. It's unbelievable.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Clark?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it was a great tour yesterday. I was also thinking about how narrow some of our shoulders are, or, you know, I mean, there's just, it's challenging, and our Public Works Department does amazing work, so I think it was really great getting to be together. I had two other things. One is Thursday is the end of, the official end of the public health emergency. And want to, I don't want to steal your thunder, because you may be wanting to say something about it, just want to thank our staff, who've been incredibly nimble, forward-looking, helping our residents in ways that they probably never really thought they would be, a lot of times cross departments, and that's been pretty amazing. I think we always are pretty proud of the work we do. I think our, our, our staff, together with this board and community members, have really done some amazing things. We've learned a lot, we've grown some community partners. We, we did a different economic development trip yesterday, but we went to Jennie O prior to the pandemic hitting, and just even thinking about how much we had to ratchet up relationships there once that hit, so with community groups, et cetera. And with that, with it ending, it has huge impact on a number of our residents, our citizens, particularly seniors and some families, that have had their health plans perhaps going to be up in the air now. So knowing that, again, our staff and community partners are going to be working on that, it's just going to be crazy, and anything we can do to keep reminding people to get recertified. And then this, the other thing, is clearly, we're right near the end of session. We've all been working on a number of issues. They are, have a lot to do yet in the next couple of weeks, including things that are really going to make a difference for our communities. Some are more fully baked than others, and so continuing to make sure that our reps are hearing that their proposals really need to work for counties and our communities, our businesses, and people. So I'm sure that we'll all be in a flurry of that as, as we come to an end.
And thank you for those comments about getting us through the pandemic. I, I agree, the county did a wonderful job, very much unexplored territory for everybody that's sitting here as well, so. Commissioner Bertram?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike's not here today, so I won't do it today, and I'll try to do it before the next meeting, but I've kind of brought up a couple of issues over the last couple of months on, you know, the moment of silence, you know, the deactivation of communication towers that aren't being used. I would add to that, the Second Amendment discussion, you know, I, I kind of bring them up, and then it doesn't go anywhere, so I'm going to kind of make a list of the issues that I brought up and see how we can at least have a discussion on some of those. So we can start with that and then go from there. I'm still kind of learning the process and, and other boards, councils I've been on. It's, that process is a little different, but we'll see where, where we go with that. But I'll kind of develop a list and share it with everybody and go from there, because I'm hearing, oh, solar is another one. So I'm hearing from one or two members, we don't have a problem with that, and then it just quite doesn't go anywhere. So I'd like to have a better handle on how to flush some of that out, I guess, so, but I'll do that at a future meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Well, Jeff, maybe both would be true. Some issues have credence, and some issues don't go anywhere. It's, we all go through that. In my third month on the county board, I, I'm sure I was perceived to have off-the-wall motions, if I considered the board back then, I guarantee that was the case. The only other thing I've got to follow up on is a question of the sheriff, and that is, we, we, we get the, these large gathering ordinance applications, and some of them have history. How often do you get situations where law enforcement has to be involved in this?
I can't recall any, to be honest with you. I don't think we've ever been called to an event where somebody was making complaints about that. The only, that I can recall with the two events that were discussed here today were medicals, that we responded to. Obviously, it's hot, it's summer, and sometimes they're not taking in enough water, but I'm not aware of anything where we've had a large group gathering where we've been called to disperse it. Most, every event comes and gets the permit the way they're supposed to, so I'm not aware of any.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And the answer I was hoping for. All righty, yeah, as long as there's going to be people that object to these events for reasons that have nothing to do with the stated objection, but as long as there aren't law enforcement impact, that's great, thank you.
Yeah.
It's as tough as it gets.
Anything else, Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Uh, no. I, other than to paraphrase Mark Twain, stories of my demise have been greatly exaggerated.
Sheriff, while you're at the podium there, you know, we've had the loss of some law enforcement officers in the region the last month or so, you know, and, and that's something that we don't like to see happen, and it's tragic when we do see that. But that's the reality of the job that you have and, and your deputies have in all law enforcement. And I've said a number of times, we need to encourage people to continue that, are good people that want to be in law enforcement, and we definitely need your service to, you know, to, to protect us all, protect the county. So, you know, anything we can do to, to foster that, we want those quality people to get into law enforcement. I know we're hurting, you know, with number of people working in our jail, you know, the, the list of deputies as far as being able to hire and, and, and get quality people to come in, just the applicants going into law enforcement have dwindled. Just to say that, you know, your, your work is greatly appreciated, but somehow, we need to get out to the community that it's a worthy profession and, and admired profession, so. I don't know if you've got any-
I won't disagree with you.
Yeah.
No, it, it definitely is, I actually attended a, a national summit, if you would, on, on recruitment and retention, and the good or the bad news is that we are like everybody else in the nation. I think everybody left that conference with the, the resolve that we all have jobs, if people want them, almost to the point where it doesn't make sense to go out and try to find people and recruit them anymore, because people know we have jobs, and it's just not working. All the traditional recruitment methods aren't working. It is just a matter of, and, and I don't think it's just our industry, it sounds like it's fire, especially you'll go around, you see the volunteer fire departments are really struggling to find people to be members of volunteer fire departments. EMS, male ambulance is very short, it's not uncommon for us to now wait for an ambulance, you know, sometimes 20 minutes, because they're just, they have only so many staff and so many rigs out, so. It's not, I think it's just the public safety industry in general, that's kind of hurting. And yeah, it's just a matter of getting the right people interested in the job and let them know that these are, you're right, noble professions.
Yeah. And, and again, a great thanks to all those people that, that do step forward and, and serve for the better of the community, so, well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
And, and I didn't have anything other than, we do have the fishing opener coming next weekend.
And Mother's Day.
Yeah, that, that's, that's true. I just wanted-
We all have Mother's.
Better prioritize, Joe.
Okay.
I wasn't saying that on my behalf, mine are taking care of me, but, you know.
Okay, right, and, and so with the fishing opener, it's a time to be safe, because, you know, sometimes people get overexcited about a wai, and they want to be the first into the, the landing and all that, but it all takes time, so, and make sure we got our life jackets and our beverages are used appropriately, so just a reminder, it, it's, it's a fun time of the year that's beginning, and let's enjoy it with safety, and happy Mother's Day to all those mothers out there.
Yeah, you get away with fishing on Mother's Day? That would, that would be akin to capital punishment, my house.
Oh, well, I'm not in that capital. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting for today. With that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting for today.